All right, good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
If you take your seats. I'm Peter O'Taki. I'm honored to serve as mayor this evening, and I'm going to call the special meeting of the Menlo Park City Council for August 13th, 2018, to order. On my right, we have Councilmember Catherine Carlton. Next to me is Councilmember Rich Klein. To my left is Vice Mayor Ray Mueller, and over on my left is Councilmember Kirsten Keith. Over at that table is City Manager Alex McIntyre. Also, next to Alex is our Assistant City Attorney Kara Silver. Over on this side is our City Clerk Judy Aaron. And I'd like to make sure that if you -- we'd love to have you speak tonight, and if you are interested in speaking, please fill out a card over on the back tables and kindly give the card to Judy, and she'll make sure that it's queued up to the right topic. So if I can ask you all to join me for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands: one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, thank you, everyone. So first, we're going to have a short public comment period. Under "Public Comment," the public may address the city council on any subject listed on the agenda. Each speaker may address the city council once under public comment for a limited three minutes. Please clearly state your name and address or political jurisdiction in which you live. The city council cannot act on items not listed on the agenda, and therefore, the city council cannot respond to non-agenda issues brought up under "Public Comment" other than to provide general information. Just a quick question. Judy, are you sure these are -- this public comment is for non-agenda items, right? And then we'll still have -- I assume we will have public comment on the agenda item after this?
That is correct.
Okay, so this is for any non-agenda items, anything anyone would like to address this evening? Any cards that you received, Judy? Two. Okay. Okay, Fran Dean, followed by Andrew Boone. Good evening, Fran.
Good evening, Fran Dean, Chamber of Commerce. Light-hearted comment. I'm just reminding you that Thursday evening from 5:30 to 8:00 p.m. is the 12th Annual Block Party. And at your seats, you have a postcard reminder. You also have a passport, so I am suggesting that you want to use that passport on Thursday evening. Get it stamped at the various stations. Visit all the activities. There's something for everyone, but we expect you to visit all of the things. So first of all, entertainment: three bands, headliner band Notorious, two local bands, that would be Blue and Outer Half. Kids' activities: inflatable slides, jump houses, plural, game booths, photo booth, photo booth for you, too, so we expect to see you in the photo booth. Face painting, classic car show, a giant chessboard, 16 by 16, with the top chess wizard there. Three Oculus stations, a silent disco. Again, opportunity to dance. City department displays, and of course, Pokemon Go. We expect that you're going to bring your cellphone, you're going to play, you're going to collect all the buttons. And of course, outdoor dining. The weather is going to be grand. So join the celebration, and we do have a little bit of a surprise at the intermission for the headliner band. You'll hear more about it, and I'll find you wherever you are so that you can participate. Thanks very much.
Thank you, Fran. Andrew Boone, welcome and good evening.
Good evening, Mayor O'Taki and City Council members. My name is Andrew Boone. I live on Woodland Avenue in East Palo Alto, and I wanted to urge you again to begin the public outreach process, input process, for raising the minimum wage, setting a local minimum wage ordinance in Menlo Park, which you've committed to do this year. And for that to get done, you know, there should be a couple of community meetings spaced apart. It's already August, so get going on what meetings are going to happen, because even though it's a change that's kind of like expected, $15 per hour has been set by almost all the cities in Santa Clara County. The two of the largest cities in San Mateo County, Redwood City in San Mateo and others in San Mateo County, but it is a major change for many people in Menlo Park, obviously people who have to pay people more money. There's a certain dollar amount. This is not a change you just do at one city council meeting. So I think we're expecting this to get going soon. I encourage you to do that. The other thing is about the transportation plan, the comprehensive transportation plan. I can't remember the exact name. My concern is Bayfront Expressway, how that could possibly change. And I believe you supported adding a lane for buses to be a bus-only lane, but there are a lot of disadvantages to doing that, and the outcome is likely worse than better because instead of creating a bus-only lane or a carpool lane within the six lanes that are already there, it's still a hell of a lot of traffic. You don't need to add, you know, move it to eight lanes just to maintain six lanes for non-bus traffic. A carpool lane is an improvement, a much, much cheaper improvement. And adding lanes also widens the distance it takes to walk across the street, and that's the major problem. You're creating a major hazard, what's already a hazard, already a lethal hazard. People have died walking and bicycling across this street in Menlo Park recently, and you're proposing, considering widening it. That's inconsistent. It's not -- that's one reason it should just not be under consideration when the real solution, what you want, is functioning transit. The first thing to do is make a carpool lane for buses, obviously, and then have buses. The problem is people aren't riding the bus over the Dumbarton Bridge to get to work because there's not a bus there, in practical terms. You have one bus, not very frequent, you're not going to cut down on traffic. So that's the thing that needs to go ahead, and when you have it in the plan, to consider overpasses and interchange-like expansions, that's moving Menlo Park in the wrong direction. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Andrew. All right, any other public comment cards? Okay, thank you. So we'll move on to regular business, which is the topic of reconsideration of Resolution Number 6451, calling election to place charter measure on the ballot. And this was a reconsideration that we decided at the last meeting, so thank you for joining us tonight. There is no staff presentation, but I didn't know if you wanted to make any opening remarks, Kara. You're welcome to do so if you'd like, and then what I'll do is I see we have several speakers on the subject, and so I'll invite the speakers to come up, but I didn't know whether there was anything you'd like to add at this point, so.
Yes. So the only additional factor that we wanted to point out is that in order to withdraw a measure from the ballot, the county needs to receive your notice or your resolution by the 15th. And so that's the reason why you all decided to have this emergency meeting and to decide the issue this evening. If you do adopt a resolution rescinding the ballot measure, that gives us appropriate time to provide notice to the county that the measure has been withdrawn.
I'm sorry, Kara, I just missed that last part. What did you say?
If you do take action this evening on rescinding the ballot measure, that will give us sufficient time to deliver that to the county by the 15th in order for them to withdraw the measure from the ballot.
Okay, thank you. All right. Any questions before we go to speakers? All right. First of all, Ron Shepard, welcome, come on in, followed by Lynn Bramlett.
For those of you who don't know me, my name is Ron Shepard. I'm a member of the Finance and Audit Committee for the City of Menlo Park and a candidate for City Council representing District Four. I strongly urge you to support calling for an election to place the charter measure on the ballot. As your staff report suggests, becoming a charter city would permit Menlo Park to exert control over municipal affairs in the interests of the community. The League of California City's legal staff in a primer on Charter Cities versus General Law Cities does not list any downside to becoming a charter city. The primer emphasizes that being a charter city maximizes local control. Some of you may be concerned about placing this issue on the ballot at this time, as it may be confusing to many of the citizens as we have just changed to district elections. I suggest that placing this item on the ballot would encourage discussion by way of newspaper editorials and letters of support and non-support that would allow those who desire to properly educate themselves on the issue and make a thoughtful decision. In our geographic area, the following are charter cities: Alameda, Albany, Berkeley, Hayward, Mountain View, Oakland, Palo Alto, Redwood City, San Jose, San Francisco, San Leandro, San Mateo, Santa Clara, and Sunnyvale. We should follow their lead. Thank you.
Thank you, Ron. Lynn Bramlett, followed by John Kidvani.
Good evening, council. I want to thank you for reconsidering the charter measure. It takes courage to change your mind, and I appreciate this. The proposed charter measure should be pulled for many reasons. Here are my top 10 reasons. It's the result of a two-rush process and a flawed premise. One is the idea that how we elect council members is the most important factor in achieving effective governing in Menlo Park. It's not. Next, the current charter will not fix the most pressing problems facing Menlo Park. You don't need a charter to create term limits. As Councilmember Mueller has pointed out, you can pass term limits via an ordinance. A charter ballot measure will take up a lot of staff and council time for a dubious return that's almost certain to need redoing later, and I want to emphasize, I'm up here talking about this particular charter. The measure will confuse the public and erode trust and confidence in our local government, and that has to do with the process. The measure is almost certain to be defeated. Before leaving the protection of state oversight, Menlo Park needs to institute transparency, accountability, and oversight safeguards. A number of small charter cities without these in place have become the subject of corruption scandals, serious ones. We need to approach becoming a charter city for the right reasons. There are many right reasons for doing this. The right reasons would be because it is either the only way or the best way to address serious challenges to governing in Menlo Park. We need to approach becoming a charter city in the right way. The right way starts with the residents and the use of a vetted process used by other progressive cities. There is public information on this. I have some of them here. It would start with the charter commission. So residents were inadequately involved. To me, that alone should be a deal breaker. So I ask you to rescind it, and I want to suggest that instead of a charter, I propose that Menlo Park first develop a citywide vision and long-term strategic plan. I think going about that through an authentic community engagement and collaborative process that involves a wide range of residents, community stakeholders, staff, and elected officials would lead to a plan that could be the foundation for our next looking at our local government and what we need to put in a charter to improve it. So in summary, I'm not against a charter per se, but I'm against this particular one and the process that led to it. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Lynn. John Kidvani, followed by Andrew Boone. Hey, John, good evening.
Good afternoon, council. I'm here to support keeping the measure. I do on the ballot. I understand the concerns about informing the voting public and having them understand the implications of what they're doing, but I think, given the activity going on with district voting and the changes going on in the city, the best thing to do is to address that, is to take the bull by the horns and to start that discussion and to explain in basic terms what's involved and why it's important to talk about it at this time. The district committee that was formed recently did an amazingly great job when they were given an equally, a much more challenging task, and was able to come through and make what they were doing clear and transparent and come up with it and basically do something good for the city in a very, very short amount of time. So I think it's reasonable to do. The other reason for this, that I have for this, are basically more principled and basically political, which is that our districts were really foisted upon the city for good reasons that there was an imbalance in who was appearing on city council. And we have state law which governs that, and so we're working through that. But having done that, we are, voting process is not one which came from the voting public. And maybe people will think that districts are great and they're fine, and I might, I'm open, there are pros and cons on both sides, but we should hear about that soon, given that we were given the new district process now, and there's no reason not to have that discussion now. So I think for that reason alone, it's not good to put off the hard discussion. It's like having a discussion with your kids. The California Voting Rights Act also is special to California, and in a word, it really does politicize the voting process. It puts an important choice about how, who should be on city councils into legislation, which has served its purpose, and now it's time to step back and look at what's an appropriate voting process for Menlo Park. Thank you.
Thank you, John. Andrew Boone, followed by Pamela Jones.
Good evening, council members. My name is Andrew Boone. I am glad to see this item on an agenda, this decision to pull this measure from this ballot, because a charter, you know, there's a whole bunch of things that that addresses. That addresses, you know, everything about how the city's run. It's not just about how elections are done. It's a bunch of legal matters. It's really a big thing. It's a big change. I think in the end, it would be a good result for the city. You know, the gentleman earlier who cited all the other cities that are charters, Mountain View, Palo Alto, Redwood City, you know, our neighbors that I think are well-run. I think Menlo Park is well-run, but that's a major change, and it should be a longer process and not happen at the same time as a different major change, which I think people are used to and have mostly accepted, this change to district elections. Since Menlo Park wasn't the first city with this change, people have heard about it. It's a very different way. I think it's going to be a positive for the city to have a representative from Bellhaven here at every meeting, making, you know, one-fifth of the votes, making the decisions. That's an improvement, and but what you could change, like what's up for discussion in a charter and changing the charter, becoming a charter city is a lot of things. And if we're going to start talking about changing the way elections are done, what about ranked choice voting? That was something Santa Clara, when faced with the same situation, Menlo Park was proposed and recommended and wanted to adopt. San Francisco has ranked choice voting. The state of Maine now has ranked choice voting. I believe that's a major improvement. That's implementing real democracy. You know, that almost determined the outcome of the election for mayor of San Francisco between London Breed and Mark Leno was very close only because of the process of ranked choice voting, where you assign some value to your second choice and your third choice. You know, that's one thing. What about public financing of elections, which San Francisco also has in some form? I can't remember the details, but there's public money available in some significant amount for any candidate who wants to run for city council. That's another real step forward. You know, if you weren't funded by just how much money you can get from your neighbors, from wealthy people, from the city is where it should come. It's an election for us. You know, if everyone had the same amount of money to start with, that's a different kind of election. That has a different result. That's something else to discuss next year and beyond. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Andrew. Pamela Jones.
Good evening, council members and staff. I won't, Pamela Jones, resident of Menlo Park. I won't restate all of the things that I've said in regard to this motion, but I would like to remind you that the reconsideration, I see that as making an intelligent decision based on new facts and information. I was really annoyed to see it called flip-flop in the newspaper. Those are shoes, and I didn't like the comparison because that's what I'm not, that's not what I saw you do. I saw each one of you take in information, new information, as some of it was, recognize that, no, there was not a robust citizen involvement. There was a small committee that put the final terminology together. So I applaud you that you look towards a process that will give all of our residents, all of our citizens, an opportunity to discuss this measure. And also, by rescinding it, so that we, at this time, do not do anything that would try and derail district elections, we keep ourselves safe from other challenges. So again, I thank you. I urge you to vote 5-0 to reconsider. Thank you.
Thank you, Pam. Any other public speaker cards? Judy, I don't see any up on the screen. Okay. All right, I think we'll come back up here. Vice Mayor Mueller.
Yeah, I appreciate the public comment tonight, but I did want to point out, because this is a complex legal subject. It really is. We've had a number of meetings going over the legality of the California Voting Rights Act and whether or not it applies to charter cities. And there is a misconception in the city that somehow the California Voting Rights Act does not apply to charter cities. It's not true. And I'm going to quote again, and people can go look at the text of the California Voting Rights Act. I'm going to read from it right now. It's Section 1402.6, and it's C. Political subdivisions means a geographic area of representation created for the provision of government services, including but not limited to a general law city, a general law county, a charter city, a charter county, a charter city and county. The California Voting Rights Act will apply to us, whether we are a charter city or a general law city. All of the analysis that we went through as a general law city this year, as it applied to district elections, is not going to disappear or change overnight if we put this charter on the ballot or if the charter is adopted. We will not be able to make changes but for changes that relate potentially, I don't know, to changes like where a voting booth is or something like that, that a charter city. But you're not going to be able to make a change as to whether or not you can do ranked choice voting, or we would have done that when we were going through the general law city process. So what needs to happen is, people want to look at that issue, they can look at it after the 2020 census is done to see if demographics have changed in the city under a charter, under a California Voting Rights Act analysis. And frankly, what you will have happened between now and then is you will have had a defined process within the city. And people can start talking about now if they want, it'd be great if they would wait until they actually got the demographic information, but they can start talking about ideas now and educating each other. But that in itself isn't going to change. Now, Lynn, respectfully, while it's true you can go to a charter, you can go to term limits by ordinance, you have to, you do have to have a vote of the people. The public does have to vote and adopt that. But the thing is that we don't need to do this, we've all agreed we're going to do it, and we've all agreed it's going to apply to us. So whether we do that now or in 2020 is of little import because it's a three-year term we were discussing, and no one's going to be in a fourth term or running for a fourth term by 2020. So there's no prejudice to that. And frankly, I mean, we might run the risk that the charter city group that we put together might decide, guess what, guys, we only want two terms. That's fair. They could do that, and they could come back, and that could be the recommendation that gets put on the ballot. So that could just be how it is. But that'll have been through a process generated by the public, through a charter, through a charter review process. So I support, I certainly support the reconsideration motion tonight and a robust charter process around that, and I hope we do adopt it tonight, do adopt the reconsideration tonight, because I just think it's, I don't think it's good public policy to put this on without a robust charter process, where people get to sit down and talk about all these issues and come to that together. And there's no immediate need to do so, and we have tremendous, we have tremendous staffing issues right now in the city and other things as well. So those are my comments, and we'll see where we go.
Okay, thank you, Ray. Rich, Councilmember Klein.
Thank you. Yeah, I won't duplicate some of the comments, but I do think, you know, the original conversation that we had was, it was less about the ideology of charter, not charter, you know, the ethos of a city or the concern of the kind of power of a city council. It really wasn't the topics that came that rose to the top. A lot of it was flexibility and, you know, the ability to make decisions in a changing environment, to do the right things quicker. And then the secondary, which is not secondary in priority, but the big point, I think, was that, you know, trying to assume what the census data will say and how that's going to play out in a charter, I think it's just, it becomes a little, almost like we're going to have to rinse and repeat once we get our census data, I think, and we may have to look at changing things. That's why, when it came up, I thought, well, we could become a charter, the light version of becoming a charter that was put in place. It's not, it's not the robust full-city charter that we would have to put in place. This is essentially, it's, although it looks like it's, okay, the city's a charter now, now we can just make rules to make the whole charter come, I think there was a full charter process that we are going to have to move on. And I like the idea of having data and not coming in and doing it without understanding exactly how the population changed and those things, so that if an issue came up that was very sensitive and had something to do with the voter rights act, I would like to have that data before I have, or I'm going to say this unhonestly, before my city council has that conversation in a few years. And so I would like to see, you know, that's why I thought we could wait till 2020, but there are some comments that I think are just, you know, it's not a conversation I'm afraid of having. We've had harder ones. I think the idea of having a charter, I lived in Albany, I lived in Berkeley, I lived in Oakland. I went to school, you know, I lived in Hayward, I was part of the newspapers in those cities. They were all charters from 1927, 1937, 1956. These were charter cities from the beginning of time, almost, and so it's different. But also by the same notion, these cities ran perfectly fine under a charter. That's how they operated, and if people did wrong, they were voted out of town. I mean, that's how it works, and so charters are perfectly, you know, workable and actually, I think, better than general law because the state puts a lot of encumbrances on you. Frankly, the state has put a lot more in the last 10 years than ever before, and a lot of weight on cities to do things that I think are very hard for small cities to do, and there may be flexibility around that. So it's a large conversation we should have, but I, you know, I think we need more data to do it and to do it with sound mind.
Thank you. Councilmember Keith.
Thank you. Thanks to all the speakers who spoke tonight and for being diligent on the
Thanks to all the speakers who spoke tonight and for being diligent on this topic and working with us and talking with us about it. We spoke about this a little bit last week. Kat, thanks for bringing it up again, too, and it's good to see you. And I made some statements last week, or was it last week? It was, right? Time flies. That I am interested in not going forward on this right now. I think, I think it is a good discussion, and I think it's something, you know, I look at the other cities, Ron, thanks for bringing up the names of all the cities. We're familiar with a lot of those cities, and they run very well. And I think having a charter discussion is very useful. I think right now, it's too rushed, and we can do this, but I think it is too rushed. But, and I also want to reiterate just what Councilwoman Klein was saying. This wasn't about trying to get around anything. It's really just about trying to give flexibility. And I know for years, while we've been up here, we've received many emails in the past from former mayors, Lee Dubach and Mickey Winkler, asking for us to look at becoming a charter, and it never really rose to the agenda. In January, it never really got put on as a topic that we were going to take on. But they had sent many emails about this, requesting us to look into this over the years. And I don't see any interest at all from them at this point on that topic either. So I think also to what Andrew, you said, yeah, there are many things you can put in a charter. This was really meant to be just a very limited, very small charter that the subcommittee kind of put together to say, are we interested in doing this? It wasn't a full-on, because to have the full-on charter with all the things that we would maybe want to have, we would have a council, I mean, a committee put together of probably folks in the room, you know, that would be interested in being on that to look at what could be in a charter. So this wasn't meant to be a, this was a kind of charter light, I guess you could say, to have the discussion. But we can have the discussion, there's time. I think as people go through this election, as the first time as a district election, they will probably be more interested in what other ideas we can do with voting. So, thanks.
Thank you, Councilmember Keith. Councilmember Carlton.
Have to put my glasses on so I can read my notes. For those that have called and asked why I brought this up again, just to make it clear, I haven't changed my mind. I do think we should become a charter city. It works very, very well in other cities. And for those who think it's a power grab, it's not. Look at it working, functioning very well in other places. It allows flexibility, as Rich pointed out. The state is making more decisions that impact us significantly, and it gives us the ability to make sure that we're able to govern in a flexible way that benefits best our residents in Menlo Park. My only issue was with the process and the political momentum to get this passed and the information available. There's a lot of confusion going on right now, and I'd like this to be passed in a thoughtful way where people feel comfortable about we're moving forward. And I just didn't hear that from the residents that I spoke to. So for those that ask, what we put forward was, as Kirsten said, it was a, you said charter light, I considered it like a skeleton charter. It was very small and very mild. And yet, what I was hearing is that people felt more comfortable with us and felt that we would benefit from better timing and more clear information as we move forward to get this done. But make no mistake, I absolutely believe that we should become a charter city. I have not changed my mind on any of this. My only concern is the process and the timing.
Thank you, Catherine. Thank you, Councilmember Carlton. I'll just simply add and really echoing my colleagues. So do I want Menlo Park to become a charter city? I think that's still a yes in my mind. I do believe it has advantages in terms of local control, although I think, as Councilmember Klein mentioned, that difference has been minimized over the recent years as the state has, State of California's laws have increasingly applied to charter cities as well as general law cities. So the advantages for becoming a charter aren't quite as a long list or long areas that they used to be. Having said that, I still believe that there are advantages to becoming a charter city. Just to reiterate, I think our intent was to put something on this ballot that was focused solely on elections, so that it would give a chance to become a charter city and perhaps have more options to come up with an elections system that would make the best chance for, or the best election system for Menlo Park and have it in place in time for the 2020 elections. That was really our intent, right? And most of you are all here for the several meetings that we had. I think that's, as you recall, that was really what we wanted to do. But over the last couple months, as that information has sort of filtered out, gotten out, I'm afraid that what our intent of a very simple enabling charter unfortunately has sort of come across as, and this is in the best case, as being half-baked, because we haven't been able to really clearly say, well, if we go to a charter city under elections, we can do not just ranked choice, we can do X, Y, Z things. And I don't think we've been able to quite articulate that. I know our intent was to create a commission and committee to focus purely on that and come back to us in time for the 2020 elections. But because we can't say that, I think it comes across, quite frankly, it's come across as half-baked. And in the worst cases, I think some people are concerned that it appears to be a city council power grab, right? And that's the last thing we want our residents to think, because that's certainly not what we're trying to do. What we're trying to do is more in the area of local control and being able to come up with the best system for Menlo Park. And then the final additional information for me was, Santa Clara tried with a, to do with their Measure A on the June primary ballot, to have different districts and then to rank choice voting. And that initiative lost in the city of Santa Clara. I think a lot of it had to do was, there was a perception that ranked choice voting was somehow trying to either game the system or game the process or take away from, you know, one person, one vote kind of, you know, idea. And I think the bottom line is, it's a very complicated topic. It's a complicated system, and it requires a lot of explanation. So that came back for me, and it was certainly informative for me, that saying that it's very hard to rush. You know, you really can't rush it, right? And so that's where now I come back to supporting the reconsideration. Again, I want to reiterate, I do think we should go to a charter city. I do think we should establish a charter commission and go through the process with, and get as much public input and process and get the great ideas from our residents and make sure we've really done a thorough look at the charter and then come back with the charter for the 2020 election. I think that, I don't think there's any, you know, as I look at that difference, doing it now versus in the 2020 election, I think I've come to that conclusion and it makes sense for that. Vice Mayor Mueller.
And I was remiss. Now, I'm grateful we're all on the same page. I did actually have lunch with former Mayor Winkler near the end of last week about this topic. And what I think would be helpful for those who actually do look forward to a charter process, and I think, I mean, generally, the feedback is people are looking forward to that process, is that if we could, to assure those that that is our intent, between now and the end of October, commit to having something on the council agenda. I know we can't discuss it tonight, but starting to put that framework in place for that process. Because I think there are folks in town who would, I think, be assured if they saw that we were, we actually are starting that process and thinking about how we're gonna put together the charter commission and what that process will look like over the next two years. So.
Great. All right. Any other comments or questions? So I presume, oh, yes, okay. I presume we do need some sort of, you know, motion here to reconsider, correct? Is that, I just want to make sure we're doing this.
Oh, I just made it.
Okay.
Okay. One second.
So the motion on the floor is to approve the Resolution 6451, and that is to rescind the ballot measure. Are we at that stage yet, Cara?
Yes. Last week, you did move to reconsider, and so it's appropriate just to move right to adoption of the resolution as your next motion.
We could talk about it another hour, but.
Well, but I also know we have the planning commission in here at seven.
Bellhaven Library Commission meeting, too.
Yes. So let me, I just want to make sure we all know, so the, this motion will be, the reconsideration motion is essentially to pull the charter off of the ballot, correct? Just want to make sure that I'm reading this correctly.
That's correct. And to do so, there is a resolution doing that that's attached to the staff report. So we would recommend that the motion be to adopt the resolution rescinding your prior resolution, adopting the charter measure.
Okay, great. All right. Ready to vote? Let's vote.
The motion passes unanimously.
Okay, great. All right. Vice Mayor Mueller, I did take upon your suggestion that perhaps we talk about, or at least at a meeting in the fall here, beginning the process of looking at a charter commission, because I do want to assure those residents who I think are interested in either serving on the commission or at least, you know, seeing the city move to a charter, that at least we could start kicking off the process. Plus, I do appreciate all of the work that you've already done, and I want to make sure that we're able to kick that off. And so definitely appreciate, Cara, all your work on the charter. It will be, I think it will help to inform the charter commission, and so definitely appreciate that. And I think with that, our next meeting is a regular meeting for next Tuesday night, the 21st. I will also put one more plug in for the Bloc Party on Thursday and encourage everyone to attend. Councilmember Keith.
Thank you. I just want to put a plug in also for tomorrow night. The library subcommittee, we're hosting a meeting here from 7:00 to 8:00 with the folks from Hayward Library who built the Hayward Library, and they're going to come and give a presentation on that. And then there's also a tour that everybody in Menlo Park is invited to attend, to going to the Hayward Library on Wednesday. We leave here from the Civic Center at 2:30 to go over to Hayward to tour the library and what they're doing, and so people can see the vision that they've got. Thanks.
All right. With that, this meeting is adjourned. Thank you, everyone.